Okay, I've got five o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the Hartford City Council to order for its January meeting, January 27th, 2022. We'll have implications. David, would you ask a blessing on the meeting?
Father God, we just want to thank you for the life. We thank you for the Hartford and the board members here, Lord, and the Hartford. And Lord, we just give you the honor and the praise. We ask you to touch this meeting that we will get an understanding to help the people at Hartford and that Hartford may grow, Lord, like never before. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Seen all visitors, so we'll take a look at the minutes of our previous meeting. If you'll take a gander at those. We had a special call meeting December 17th, and we don't have the minute for our... Oh, that is our special meeting, right. Yeah, it's our December meeting. Take a gander at those. Entertain a motion to accept those.
I make a motion to accept them.
All right, there's a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carried. We'll have a report from our illustrious city attorney.
I didn't get a copy of the agenda. I've been tied up, but I just got off the phone right before I came up with Stacy Milton with Audubon, and Lisa had forwarded me a contract and vendor agreement. They have federal funds that is going to allow them to help low-income homes offset high water and wastewater bills that might be owed to the city. And to do so, they have two parts of that. It's called a crisis payment and a subsidy payment. And a crisis payment, they can give a household up to $800. So if they can't pay a water bill one month, they can apply, and it'll cover all late fees, disconnect, reconnect fees, everything, and they can apply for it as many times as they want to get up to $800. Okay? Then they have a subsidy payment that you can apply for one time, and I think it's up to about $200 per account. But that subsidy that they could pay for, it would act as a credit on the account. And there were some questions that I had based upon what she had sent that she and I kind of walked through and just to kind of get a little bit is what it would do is if somebody came in and they were facing either a disconnect or they had been disconnected, their water was just standing, and they don't have the money to reconnect it, we can give them the information or tell them the web address where they can go online and fill out this application. Once they fill out that application, Audubon Area would contact the city and said, hey, we've got an approved application here. We're going to send you funds. Once we get that certification that they're approved to this applicant, we have to mark them for do not disconnect, even though funds could take four to six weeks to be here. Okay? However, she says, once you're marked, you're going to get them. It's just got to go through a federal and then a state clearinghouse and everything to get it. But I asked, I said, what happens if before we get that payment for that month, the next month rolls in and they have a bill that they can't pay? She goes, that doesn't matter. That's a separate one. Then you could disconnect if they didn't pay that one by the due date, but you can't disconnect for the prior month because we've already approved payment if they tell you. And they'll tell you if it's going to cover the whole bill or if it's a partial and they'll have to make up the difference. There was a few things in there that I'd asked about. One of the rules of the program is that if a landlord knows that a tenant is receiving this credit and the subsidized payment for water bills, they can't increase rent. It has that in the vendor agreement. I explained, you know, there's no way the city can be liable and or enforce that against landlords. She says they would not ever anticipate enforcing that from a city standpoint. They would just ask for the landlord's name so that they could discuss the issue with them. I asked a little bit because our water bill is a combination. It's water, wastewater, and trash. I think those are the only three things that I think we include on ours.
Well, tags.
Well, yeah. She goes, do you all break it out? I said, I believe there's a line item on the initial water bill. She goes, well, what about the disconnect notice? I'm like, the water bill says due, it's not paid by like, I think, the 24th, you're automatically disconnected. There's no separate thing. And she goes, what happens if they pay all of the water, but they don't pay the trash? And I said, still disconnected. So she said that we could work with her on that because technically it's only for water and wastewater, but if there's no real way for us to break it out and know who gets disconnected for this and not that, which we don't really because our guys on the truck don't have access to that system, she said that she could work with the city to make sure the whole thing gets paid so that somebody doesn't go on a disconnect list. So we would just have to work with her.
So they're going to pay the whole bill?
Up to $800. And if we have somebody with over $800 and everything, we need to look at some issues, but that's what she said. It's a crisis payment. And so, for example, if somebody's got a $200 bill this month and it's after disconnect and reconnecting everything, it's $275, they apply for that crisis payment. Then the next month, if they have trouble with that one, they could apply again and they can get up to $800 from that crisis amount. And then that subsidy is a one-time thing, and usually they would coincide for that first time. They would apply that subsidy, which is like up to $200, and you would credit that account and bill against it for the next month, kind of to help people get back on their feet.
What happens after it gets $800? Is zeroed in?
It's out. Like, you're only allowed up to $800. But it's a win-win. You know, the customer gets to have access to water. The city gets the bills paid, so we're paying for the services that we're providing. And, you know, all we have to do is abide by the program requirements. And she gave me her email and personal cell number in case the city has any questions or the water clerk setting it up. You know, I don't really see any reason to maybe not jump in based on what I'm hearing.
Okay, let's just say that right now. We'll entertain a motion if you want the city to enter into this contract with Audubon Area to provide this opportunity for people to get their bills paid through them for up to those limits, if you want to do that or not. You know, that would be the motion.
It's like we should.
I make a motion that we should go along with Audubon Area.
Okay.
At least we know what gets the money.
All right. Any discussion regarding?
Stacy said.
Stacy said.
Yeah, she said. Any discussion?
We've already had some customers over here already that's done this, haven't we?
We've got...
And we've shut their water off.
Because that's federal money, they got several different programs. But the two programs that she's talking about, we've got one that's dated January 14th. We haven't seen anything from them on that, but they call that a pledge. I explain the reason that we do disconnect water. The way that we do is because it cuts off the losses of continuing to run the bill up because by the time that she said that that's going to now go along to Frankfurt, it'll be another three to four weeks.
That's one thing we discussed, and that's why I made sure to ask if for some reason the next bill comes due before the first payment is, you know, if they don't pay that on time, can we disconnect? And she said yes, because... But she says that really shouldn't happen because if they apply for that crisis to catch up and reconnect their water from the first one, they'll also apply for that subsidy, which they would end up giving that $200 to the account, which would act as a credit so the next month you can bill against that. So it should keep them either a very low balance that's owed the next month or cover the next bill just to make sure it all stays on.
Sounds like a good deal for a lot of people.
It could, yeah.
How do we get the word out quickly, or?
Well, the ones that are delinquent, you know, we're in contact with them about shutting their water off. When we do shut it off, they contact us and we can tell them.
And they have a local office, and we have their phone number.
And she said that their website, audubon-area.com, if you go on there and say on their request assistance tab on their website, they can fill out that form there and get put in the system, and somebody will contact them to get them put up.
A resident reached out to me the other day and said that he'd done that, but he still got shut off. They said he was going to send the city $300.
And we did. We did shut him off because we still haven't received payment.
Like past month? Is that what you're saying?
But...
There you go.
But then, like number three on this agreement, it says that we will, any assistant recipient shall be treated the same as any household that didn't receive this assistance. We treated him like everybody else.
That would be the only thing is, once you receive the notice from... Right now, the city's not enrolled in the program as a primary vendor. Okay? They may have applied.
Just on their own and that...
Right. So there was no notification ever sent to the city. Once the city has signed up as a vendor, they will give the notification to the city, and at that point, the city has to put that residence on a no shut-off list.
And whenever those funds do come in, he will have a credit.
Right.
The only thing we have to be careful of is at the very end, when they reach their $800, is they could have a $400...
Well, and that's the issue too, is Audubon keeps up with all that. The city wouldn't have to do that. The city would basically just say, hey, they owe this much. And Audubon would say, okay, here's how much that we're going to approve for that. And as for the individual that contacted you, I imagine it's because without the city being as a vendor, there was no notice and there was no way to not do it.
Right. Does it cost the city anything to be in this program?
No, other than it just takes four to six weeks to get a check, so.
They're not getting one?
Right.
Because we originally signed up with them, and it was supposed, they told us that it would be an ACH program, and they asked for our banking ACH information. I gave it to them, and this is when COVID first came out, and we've received two that way since that timeframe. That's the only money that we've received through ACH. Then they told me that I had signed a contract, and I said, no, we haven't signed any contract. Then that's when she forwarded.
And I think that's what this is, and this actually would get the city set up as a vendor, which will greatly increase communication, I think, at that point, too, and get it taken care of, so.
Any more discussion? All in favor are up 5 to 10? Okay, looks unanimous. All right, thank you. Anything else?
Not right now.
Okay, take a look at the financials and let's see if you have any questions about anything there.
What are these charges or payments we've made to the engineer on the park thing?
Just one in it. I think we just paid it.
There's two of them. One for $2,800 and one for $8,200, or give me time to find them.
Yeah, I've got them on the folder. What we've got, the... Depends on if you're talking about the booster pumps at the country club and the park, both of those that did come out of the opera funds.
Here's one for $2,360. And one for $6,500.
We paid those. Yeah.
What are we getting for it?
Well, we've got the plans. They've given us plans and a cost estimate for, you know, for the park. I've got copies now. We'll look at... Well, they've gone a little farther since we've had discussions that they've put it in. I'll go ahead and give you these right now.
Can I shoot my gun?
Yeah. I thought you were more than well.
Well, never enough.
I nod, you know, to take your word from me. You thought really he was...
Yeah.
I'm just going to pass these out during the new business portion, but I'll go ahead and give them to you now since the question came up about the finances. What you've got here is the diagram of proposed plan. It's been divided up into three different phases. The first phase is surrounded by the red line. The second phase is surrounded by the blue line, and the third phase is the yellow line. And then you've got a cost estimate for the various items in the park.
Didn't you talk to somebody that would do some of the dirt work?
Well, they volunteered, but... Yeah, I don't know how that would work with a contractor to try to be doing things and you've got somebody else that's in there. I've talked to the engineer about that. I told him, you know, what we had, the offer. He said, not knowing the individual, not knowing the expertise or anything like that, we don't know how much we'd be saving. Might create more problems by having it come in with a contractor set up to do some of the work, part of the work, and then him ready to do some of the work. And so he didn't think it was a very good idea.
Lot of money to...
Do what now?
Lot of money to move some dirt around.
Well, there's a lot of great work out there for drainage to do these different... Did I have enough to go around with those? I probably copied all seven of them. Here, take this one. I can always, I've got it on email.
You gave me mine back in last year's. I don't want to take it.
Right now, let's just go back to the finances. If you've got any questions about the finances, we need to either okay them or not, the financial Anybody have any questions about any of the finances?
I make a motion to accept the finances.
Second? All right, second. David? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, going down our agenda, the next item is old business. If we have anything old business that you want to bring up. I noticed you mentioned last time about raises or anything like that. You want to bring that up again?
Yes, sir. At least go up to $100 on that.
Do what now?
We at least could go up to $100 on that for the board members.
Up to $100 more?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you just said $100. I was thinking you already got $150, so that'd be good.
Yeah, don't cut us $50.
I didn't cut you.
What's this for?
This is for the board members.
For council members.
Be the next election. It'd be the next election.
It has to, it can't take effect with the current. In fact, is it a two-year waiting period, I think, actually?
Why do we need a raise?
I think it can be with the next election.
Why do we need a raise?
It's got to be down to May.
Why do we need a raise?
I mean, us is not doing nothing. It don't make no difference, but us is doing something. I think we could use a little raise, don't you? You're doing something, right?
Well, I am, but I mean, you know, I don't think I need a raise for...
Well, I mean, the other councilmen and ministries in other cities, and let me make a statement here, Morganfield is even getting insurance for the board members, and Morganfield ain't even big as us. Then we got another little town. I'm trying to think of the name of it. I talked to them, and they getting $250. I mean, what would it hurt us getting $250, so?
I'd rather give our employees a raise than us.
That'd be good for the employees.
One vote.
Make a motion. Hands, if you get a second, if you get a second, then we'll discuss, and after we discuss, we'll vote. Okay?
I'll motion $100.
Make a motion for a $100 increase.
$100.
Okay. All right, there's a second. Now, discussion.
Two seconds, yes. Two seconds.
Tony then. Any discussion?
Like I said, the only thing I think is we ought to give our employees a raise before we, any of us even think of that.
You understand the motion, Stacia?
Yes, I do.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, we'll vote on all in favor of increasing the city council's pay $100 a month. Uplifted hand?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Okay. Motion carried forward to two. All right, going on to new business. You've got the Ellis Park update. Is there any action that you want to take on it or anything?
But this is what we've gotten so far for the money we paid.
Yeah. Engineers are high.
Damn right.
I would hate to sit down and try to figure out how much each one of those things is going to cost to put in.
I'm going to make one comment.
I think you used the strike method.
I'll make one comment, though. You got a whole lot of quirks and ideas for basketball and pickleball and tennis over here and playground and nowhere to park.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it's contingent upon this becoming a parking lot here. You've got a parking lot there. In the original plans, there was a parking lot right here.
That's what I thought.
But you've got this over here, too. We always got that possibility of there, you know, depends on how things proceed. When do they start to work on it or what? Do what now? When are they going to start to work on the dirt? Oh, I don't think they'll start on it until we've got some money that we can order, take bids, you know. If you do it in that order there, phase one, phase two, and phase three, you know, you're talking, what, $700,000 for just phase one?
What's the question, George? What's the question before, did you, are you getting approval for the phase? Is that what you're trying to...
Oh, no. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion if anybody wants to take action on it, you know.
Do we not think this is worthy of bids? I mean, for this amount of money?
Well, you know, I think we need to be in a little better financial shape before we... I mean, we don't even own all the property out here yet.
Oh, I know. We've been digging around with it for how long?
Well, I've been in contact with them here. I gave them a proposal and asked for a counterproposal, and they're just kind of slow-walking it.
Have they paid the taxes?
Do what?
Have they paid the taxes?
Well, yeah, they pay taxes every year.
I thought there was a big...
That's a different area. That's a different one. The one he's... No, he went, he and I have been working on this other.
Where is it?
I've got, for the first batch, I've got two more properties to finish the title on, and then we're filing.
Which one's behind on the taxes?
I don't know that that's a discussion on litigation that you want to, but...
George, is this the best time for me to bring up my church lot?
Well, if you can.
See if we can. My church is, you know, so, I mean, and I am trying to buy me a house, too. But I didn't know that would be a good parking place over there because y'all would have all of it then, except for that one spot, you know.
What, have you and Justin got together yet?
We had some title things that popped up that I had to get some information from David about, and I was going to kind of talk to you about regarding, so.
Yeah, if you want to bring it up, I mean, that'd be a time, you know, as good as any.
I'd say let's bring it up and see what we can do and where we can meet in the middle.
Okay.
Because you know I'm easygoing.
Okay. We'll probably need to go into closed session to discuss acquisition of property, so we'll put that off till the last, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's no action anybody wants to take on it right now, then we'll go on to the next item of business, but it's out there mostly for information for you to see what kind of a cost estimate we're looking at.
From one entity.
Do what?
From one entity. One entity.
Let's see, I'd like to recommend Dean Minton to serve on the regional wastewater board to represent Hartford. We're missing one since John had to get off, and Dean knows as much about our relationship with wastewater boards as anybody does, so I'm recommending that we elect him to serve as our representative on that board.
I make a motion to accept Dean Minton.
All right. Anybody, all in favor? I'll start to ask the discussion, but... All right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We must be long distance, I guess.
We ain't seen your arms in a while.
Over in Oakwood, your house is pretty long.
Let's see, the Water Department has asked me to present to you a proposal to purchase a listening device to pinpoint leaks. We've got a system that we purchased two or three, four years ago that we can... We can tell where a leak is between meters. We just can't pinpoint, so we have to call Dale Harris from the... From rural water over in Bone Green to come over when he's available, and he's got this listening device that he can pinpoint where a leak is. If you notice over by the Christian church, the fire plug there, we've had a leak there, and there's numbers that are increasing and decreasing to pinpoint the actual location of... Well, he listens to it, and he can actually determine exactly where the leak is. We had the situation down here, Mulberry and West Redica. We had a leak there at that intersection. We ended up digging up a pretty good-sized place, and then asked him to come in, and he listened, and it was on down even further in the intersection. So we would have had to, you know, the way we've got it right now, we can tell general location for it, but we can't be extremely accurate. And... And, uh, pinpoint it, and so this device. Uh, includes, uh, a sensing unit, uh, it's got headphones, uh, a ground mic attachment, probe bar. Um, it's got, um. An iPad mini that comes with it. Um, anyway, the total cost is, uh, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-five cents.
Was somebody actually trained how to use it?
Well, they already know from watching Dale. I mean, it's, uh, it's not that, it's not that complicated, um. Uh, I've, I've seen him use it, but I've, as far as, it's got a, a sensing on the end of a, a rod. It's got a sensing unit, it's got cable, goes up to headphones, and he can tell by, it's like a Geiger counter, I guess, the, the. The volume increases, it's got a readout on the iPad, actual number readout increasing and decreasing, so when you get to the largest number, that's where your leak is, you know? So you, you're not digging up. Twenty yards of street, you know, to try to chase a leak down. It, uh, it's tougher than it looks like and to pinpoint it, and this thing would, would help.
How much? A couple of months, I have a question. Couple of months ago, when we hired the people to identify the twenty-seven leak, however many leaks that we have around here in Hartford, was that not effective?
Uh.
Is that not working enough, and now we need this?
Well, they pinpointed, uh, all the leaks that we had at that time, but we can't ask them to keep coming in, you know, when new leaks happen. Um.
Have we fixed all the leaks? Or five?
We've got, um, I think we've got nine leaks right now. That, uh, we've got pinpointed, or we've got located, but we've got to pinpoint the actual location, uh, just to cut down on. But, uh, they, they showed us leaks that, uh, went down on Barn Street. There's a leak down there, a big leak. But it's, uh, the line, they believe is about fifteen feet deep, and we don't have equipment that can go that deep, so we'll have to get. Uh, the, the company's offered to come back and help us with that particular leak. Uh, but we'd have to get, uh, Luttrells or somebody else with bigger equipment to come in, like we did over on Clay Street.
How much was this machine?
Three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And ninety-five cents. You know, they're working to try. To stop the leaks as best they can, you know, but they're. The time that they've got available to do it, they need to be able to do it, you know, as quickly as possible and not spend all day or half day digging up a seat.
Well, I think, and I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead and get it, but at the same time, I wanna ask. If they ever pass any of these dollars coming out of Washington, won't there be something that we could apply for to completely redo our water system? Our water, our water pipes at least.
I know what you're saying. Um. I talked to Blaine Luttrell the other day about. Repacing water lines. And to be honest, he just kinda laughed. It's just such a big costly task, and he said, um. You'd have every street in town dug up, you'd have every yard or where they cross and things like that, you'd have dug up.
That's true.
Uh, you're talking millions.
I know, three or four, at least.
I, I don't think he would recommend doing it, but that's, you can talk to him, you can talk to him and see what he.
Well, we need to stop and think of all the money that we have spent fixing leaks and doing this, and going back to the same spot, time after time after time after time. And if the money were to come available, why wouldn't we go for it? I mean, I, see, I don't understand, that we can keep buying these monitors and we can do all this stuff, we're gonna have leaks in the future regardless.
Right.
Somebody's gonna forget to put the glue around it or something, but. If, I mean, I think we have to look further than just beyond the end of our nose. If we could possibly ever come up with any kind of money, if we can, from federal grants.
I talked, I'll talk to, uh, Joe Bailey, he's an engineer with water management, and, uh. He can give me some kind of an idea. About cost and, and available funds.
I think, you know. As well as I do, some of these houses are still sitting there with Gavin as pipes in them. And have probably been there since you and I were born, George.
Yeah. I'll talk to Joe and see.
We're not working on leaks inside the houses, just get water to it.
But we can at least get the water to them.
Good.
If we can keep, uh, contractors off of our lines, we'd be all right. We had a.
Set up a.
Contractor ripped a line loose over on Clay Street, and water was shooting out over the house, and it was that high.
Did he call to see where the lines were or anything?
Did he call Spine?
Did he call Bud or whoever it is?
Yeah, he just failed to check with the.
City.
With the city.
Find him.
We did, we sent him a bill.
I would send him more than a bill, I'd make some money off of it. Until you, no, it's like everything else, George, until you start dipping into their pockets.
Right.
They're not gonna pay any attention.
This took a big chunk out of his pay on that job, so.
We, we don't have a map of wherever line is, we got lines that we probably don't know where they are.
Yeah, Grant gives us a map, but it's just where we tell them the lines are, you know? Uh, I don't think they even know, there's two or three lines going up Clay Street, you know, that are different sizes, they're.
It's not uncommon. It's not uncommon in old tiny towns, so.
No.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it, they've made do with whatever they needed to do to keep it going. But anyway.
I'll talk to Joe and see what we.
Like I said, I'll make the motion we buy this thing.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay. Money comes out of.
Your pocket.
Yeah. Maybe.
Male retirement fund.
Occupational tax, is that all right with you? I'm gonna ask you something, too. Uh, we've, we've already agreed to replace the pump on, on, uh, Country Club, and we were gonna take the money out of ARPA. I'm gonna ask, is it all right for you, to you, with you? I'll get the right preposition in a minute. If we change from ARPA funds to occupational tax, since it is infrastructure that we're doing this with. Um, I'd like to try to hold on to as much ARPA funds as we possibly can.
What we gonna do with them?
With that?
No, with the ARPA funds, we're just gonna hold them in our pocket.
The water tank with, I met with the engineers today, and we're ready to bid that project if, you know, in the next month or so. You've already agreed, I mean, the council's already agreed to, to work on the tank.
I know, I, I just think we agreed on it, is that passed a year and a half ago?
Do what now?
Was this passed the, the last election, or was this the different council that voted on that tank, or what?
This council's voted, uh.
This council voted on that tank?
Yeah.
I would like to see the minutes on that.
Okay. It was back, uh, about a year ago or so.
So the idea is to reduce the current tank?
Do what now?
So is the idea to use that money to reduce the current tank?
Yes.
What if there's ever expansion? What if we ever need it again? We're gonna have a tank that we keep going back, and it's big, then it's small, then we keep that again?
The bottom half of that tank is, is non-functional. Okay, it's full of water, but it's, uh, it's of no use to us, and it creates problems for us. We have to mix the old water, you have to mix the old water with the new water that you process. You've got byproducts, you've got loss of chlorine, we have to do more flushing in our lines, wasting water because of that tank. The tank, uh, the engineer is, has lowered the, the volume of that, is lowering the volume of that tank to, uh, four hundred thousand gallons. And with the small tank, we've got enough for expansion, uh, to accommodate, uh, hotel, uh. Truck stop, whatever, uh, we add in the future.
What was the rationale to make it that big anyway, and now we, why we having the back?
Well, back when they, back when they built it, we'd had a fire here in town that, uh, just depleted what storage we had, and they were having to run the, the tank. And so, uh, they were gonna build a new, uh, tank, and they had a million dollars available to them, and so they said, let's just build a million gallon tank with it. That's what, what it cost. But nobody bothered to look at the engineering on it, uh, to determine that when it got down to a certain point, it wasn't generating enough pressure for. Uh, the outer part of the city especially, that's why we're, we've got a pump over on Country Club Lane, because we can't, there's no pressure over there. People can't, don't have enough water to rinse the soap out of their hair and shower. Um. It reached the airport, but there was never any water in the, uh, upper floor of the airport. They had to, uh, have five gallon buckets of water just to, uh, use to flush it come out. So, it, it's just, uh, the bottom part of it is troublesome and of no use to us, the water that we've got stored there. I'm just going by the recommendation of what the water department and the engineers have said that we need to do to that tank to make it more useful for us.
What does Joe Bailey say about it?
He's all right with it.
I talked to him today, and he said he didn't think it'd be a good idea.
Do what now?
I talked to him today, and he said he didn't think it'd be a good idea to do it.
Well, I've, I've talked with him before, he didn't understand the full.
And then, to my knowledge, with the discussion that you had today with this other engineer, they said that they would have to repaint the insides and outs, is that correct?
No.
He didn't say that?
They'll reseal the outside.
Okay.
It costs you roughly, will be less than nine thousand dollars to reseal it. I mean, they'll, when they do the welding on the inside, it'll create some burn spots on the outside, and they'll reseal it with a, a white silicone that, uh, will cover up. And actually be a better coating than the paint we've got on it.
Because I, I know that, um. We done some repairs, what, three years ago maybe, and we spent two hundred thousand dollars or more?
Well, they repurposed the whole tank, they repainted.
And then they put the mixer and everything in.
Put the mixer in, and the mixers, mixers that we've got, I'm sure some engineer said it was good, some other engineer will say it's not good, you know? They won't have a, a type of mixer in the new tank.
Does this other engineer, does he have a price on what he's thinking? I know metal and everything's high.
He said that, uh, our, our funds that we've, I've told him that we've got is, is sufficient to take care of, of that.
Of course it would, in his eyes, he's a salesman. Did we get any other quotes from any other engineers?
I mean, he's gonna have to bid it out, they'll be contractors, he'll determine the price, and we'll just have to say whether we agree to it or not. I mean, if you don't wanna do it, that's fine, we just go on with doing what we're doing and, uh, pay the engineer for his work so far and.
Well, if there's a motion already in the minutes, then we'll have to reflect on that motion. Cause you said it was in there, so.
What, which engineering firm?
Do what now?
Which engineering firm is the one who submitted the proposal?
This, uh, it's, uh, Earl Coffee, he said.
Well, there was one that we saw that was a water management thing, we weren't sure what project it was for. I don't see one.
Do what?
I don't see one. Not for Earl Coffee.
Uh. No, I know we've, we've done it, uh. Wouldn't have gone this far without it, uh.
Are you sure it wasn't a prior?
Hmm?
Sure it wasn't a prior council?
Might've been, I'm just trying to think, let's see, this one's only been in for a year, yeah, it's probably going back farther than that.
Before, before June two thousand nineteen?
Uh.
Before June two thousand.
Yeah, I think so.
How's that mixer working, George? Something just bends around, or?
Oh.
An aerator?
No, it's, it's down the bottom, and the way they described it, it shoots out jets of water.
Like an aerator, seeing a bomb?
It doesn't put air in there, because that really is chlorine, if you get air in there, so it just.
On that purpose, what shoots water up?
Do what now?
Work on the same purpose as an aerator, but shoots water up in front of the bottom, the mixer.
Yeah, but it, it's just. It just, uh, periodically jets out water, and that's supposed to do some stirring, but it, it's not, uh, a good process.
Do it all the time, or just there down there?
No, it's plugged in, it does, it works all the time.
I think mixing good.
Well, what, what will, what they'll do with, uh, with this new system, to decide to go with redoing the tank, then, there'll be, uh, the inlet, it'll have. Oh, like three jets there, and of course. It's, uh, it's where it fills up, too, it fills up through these, so it's constantly, uh, moving that. It's a much smaller area, it's only, instead of being a hundred feet tall, it's only thirty-four feet, thirty-eight feet tall, something like that. So you get better water circulation than trying to move water in a hundred-foot tower.
I went back to January two thousand eighteen, and I don't see it.
Oh, it must be back before then, then.
That's in another book.
Uh?
That's in another book. This book starts January two thousand eighteen.
Okay. Yeah, uh, we'll just have to look for it, you know, if you wanna put it on hold, that's fine. If you want, don't discontinue it, that's fine, we'll just pay the engineer for work he's done, so.
Have there been any other proposals to fix the issue?
Well, I don't know how you'd fix it, you know, if, other than what, what he's come up with.
Do you want to table it, George, and let her see if she can find in the minutes, and that way she might, cause don't you save with that meeting, don't you save some of the proposals with it sometimes? Like the paperwork that's presented? That might help re-jog or, or something, especially if it's for the prior council, I'm just trying to help, sorry.
Let's, let's see, I'm trying to think how far back.
Did he submit a written proposal?
We may have a, we may have had a motion for engineering on the tank, but you're saying a motion on actually fixing the tank?
Yeah, I think it's a motion to fix the tank, but that's okay.
I can't remember.
You know, if you wanna make a motion.
We've been talking about it a long time.
Do what?
We've been talking about it a long time, it seems like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know the discussion's been there, I just can't remember a specific meeting, I don't, I don't know, I, I barely remember what I ate for dinner last night, so.
I was thinking we just had a motion for engineer to come in and see what it would take to fix it.
Do what now?
I thought if we just had a. I thought it was just that a motion for engineer to come in and see what it would cost us to fix it.
Okay, that, that was the extent of it?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm thinking that, I mean.
Well, it may be a council before this one, you know.
Yeah.
I don't remember. But if you don't wanna do it, that's fine, just make motion, we'll stop and, stop in our track and.
So we just table it for now and see if she can find anything.
Well, we, the engineer was here today, was, he's setting up, uh, a timetable for us to have, uh, a bid, put it in the paper, take bids and pre-bid meeting and. So I can just call him and tell him to hold off on that till after our next council meeting. That make any difference to me? Y'all decide what you want to do and tell me.
Hold off until next month then.
Okay. And see if we can find before we.
Yeah.
You got the, in the. Before we got it, uh, in the minutes, they agreed to do it or?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll call him.
Send me water, be it.
Do what?
Send me like there'll be a cheaper, easier way to mix that water.
Well.
Well, that, wasn't the water department pouring out about five hundred thousand gallon a day or?
Right now, we're using about that.
Are you pouring it out or using that much?
They're producing that much.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought there was a big deal about them having to just pour out some water.
Well, we're having to.
To empty the bottom half of that tank.
When they were flushing the lines?
Surely I didn't dream that up.
No, they were, they were flushing the lines repeatedly there for a good long while because we had a, they had the chemical buildup.
Every time before we test, every, before we test every quarter for about a week, we have to flush lines.
I guess.
For a couple days. You got to, to get the byproducts out.
I know.
So we can pass tests.
There is some, somebody told me sometime that on a daily basis, they were dumping water out on the ground or down in the river or wherever they dump it.
That was four or five years ago, they were flushing several times a day, if you remember, their, the, the red stuff, what, what was that? That, that gets in the water? What, you remember what I, remember what I'm talking about? Yeah, and they were flushing lines because they were having to get some chemical or something out, I think. I know what you're talking about, but that's been quite a while, I think.
Years ago, they used to flush them tanks on Frederick Street. Every day, cause they'd run down them ditches there.
But I remember, you're not crazy, I remember what you're talking about.
I gotta replay it.
Well, yeah.
Back to the meeting.
Hmm.
I'll take, I'll make the motion that we transfer, transfer the funds from the ARPA over to the occupational tax. That was the origi, initial question right there, wasn't it?
No, I want to.
Yeah, it was for the pump.
I want to finance the pump?
Yeah.
I want to just change the wording from ARPA to?
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
We take the money out of the occupational fund rather than ARPA?
Yes.
For?
The Country Club pump.
Yeah, the pump. Oh, that was the original question.
Yeah.
Had a motion.
It was on tape.
Kinda, kinda got sideways there, so I wanted to get my man.
Second, is it second to it?
I thought we had agreed to buy that pump a long time ago, what you all did, I don't even know when then. They don't pay taxes. That just irritates me, to take taxpayer money from Hartford to put it out. People don't wanna come in city limits cause their taxes would go up. See, don't, don't wake me up on these things.
So you wanna get a pump too, since you're into city limits?
No, I don't want a pump, but I don't, I don't think we ought to buy them one, let them buy it. If they wanna buy it, they have it put in, we'll do it.
The county's gonna help us on the cost.
They've agreed to what, twenty-four thousand, I think? Is that right? They've agreed to twenty-four thousand on that, on their end.
That's what, change the funding is all I want to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a first.
Huh?
Second right here.
The second is Tony. Any more discussion? All in favor? Just change, make one change? Okay, thank you.
Opposed.
Okay. What'd you say?
I said aye.
Aye, she said aye.
All in favor? Can't see my hair yet?
Okay.
You got short on it.
We're gonna have to get your red.
If we did, you have any, love? See my face?
How do you feel now?
You're talking about me coming back, I feel it.
I was spinning the phone around and around, okay. Um. I don't have anything else, that's all I've got, so anybody have anything you wanna bring up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, I was told today that, uh, over here behind the water where Josh is, they both just start tearing that down in March.
Okay.
And I think we gave him a couple of months to get out.
Now, that was last September.
Well, Clay's gonna call me and, and I, and we'll get Josh two weeks to get out. He said he can get out two weeks.
Yeah, they said it'll take a while to get the lines and the gas and everything taken.
Yeah, so it'll take him a couple of weeks to be ready to tear it down.
It was just mentioned to me.
Yeah. He's expecting a little better weather, but it's not hard on those machines and things like that.
Right. And we are losing one, one of our guys.
Okay, I've got one other thing. Uh, Dustin has come up with some possibilities for our sign. You got enough for everybody?
No, but I got two.
Anyway, that's. What's it gonna look like? Do what now?
Is that admittedly the one on the bottom is the most sensible? Uh, what I want, I think you have something up there that has what's on that flag.
On, it's a cabin.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually the first courthouse.
Okay, but, uh, but it's got, it's almost like a seal, it's got words around it.
Yeah, we've got an official, we've got an official seal.
Right. What I'd like is to put that on that.
That's what the official seal.
Yeah, but I'm talking about that.
Yeah.
The first courthouse and the, the writing around it, uh, that would be what, what is in that circle.
Okay. On the bottom for the red.
But I, I, I just, I just gotta get ahold of it. Uh, uh.
Get in that?
Stacey, I sent you a picture.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, uh.
I thought, I wondered if there was like a fan or something.
There's a drawing there of Earl Russell.
She's dead.
I could probably make it.
Okay.
See, the whole, the whole, the, the whole thing that I have to do with it is to make it really big, I would need to turn it into, not getting too tactical, a, a vector graphic. See, that, all, everything you see on that paper, you can make it as big as this building and it's probably just as good as it is.
It needs to be repainted.
And so, I would have to, I would have to make that cabin somehow, some way. So I need to get a good, a good image of it so I can trace it and make it work. And I gotta have software to do it, so it needs to be pretty good. But, uh, uh, I can, I can hopefully work something up like that. The others, like, like I said, uh, the others were just me messing around, uh, with things that I already kinda have around and all the bonds can be changed and everything, anything on there can be changed, really. Uh, the smaller ones, I wondered just in my head, because it's so wide, if you wanted to make room for, like if there was an event happening and you wanted to put a big poster on one side or leave an area for something that was happening that you wanted to promote. But, you know, that was just me kinda thinking out loud. But like I said, admittedly, that, that bottom one is, is the most sensible. Uh, and it's clean and it's easy. And I wasn't, also wasn't real sure the process of what you were gonna have it made, you know. Uh, I've never, I don't know that I've ever had anything printed that big, so I don't know what the process would be. But I know they can print things big, so.
Well, the fellow in Lexington said he could accommodate us with the printing, I mean, the, uh, you know, the, not painting it all, but the, the decals, the.
Oh, Donald, who said?
The fellow in Lexington that we initially called, that I initially called.
Yeah, that's, that's a high given, I think, what he's talking about, that's a high given.
And this is gonna be better than the sign we have now? Cause you won't have to repaint it in a few years or?
Yeah, it'd be like a metal sign, I think.
Huh?
I think it'd be like a metal sign, isn't that what you're kinda?
We've got a metal sign, you're always gonna have problems with rust and things like that, you know. I mean, this, it's.
Yeah, see, I need that on.
It's not painted now, you know, it's, it's, uh.
Didn't they have like those old church fans like that?
I call them decals, it's not decals, but.
Vinyl letters.
Huh?
Vinyl lettering.
It's got something on it, you know, uh, it's not painted.
It's that I use, it's on, it's like a, uh.
Do what?
In a clear type deal that protects it in the weather.
Marine, M-A-R-I-E, marine paint. Now, they normally use those for the outside things?
Just the, probably the, the, uh, background.
Oh, well.
What, what y'all wanna do? You wanted to change the sign, so.
I mean, as soon as I can come up with that, I'm gonna do with that. I think what I'd like to do is quite literally what is, what is on that shirt, you know.
Two thousand, I, I mean, I, I think the home of two thousand and a half people needs to be prominent anyway. But do that and then the bicentennial and maybe even say, just like that that's on the shirt.
In the circle?
But, but right here. And it's gonna be, I mean, just the circle itself is probably gonna be three feet. I mean, that's ten feet wide, so, I mean, it'll be plenty big, so.
I think it would have to be in where this is done in full and you've got so many little narrow lines.
Yeah, that's the thing, is that the picture that you.
Gotta be big.
Yeah, the picture that you, you, you had inside might be something better that I can work with.
You can maybe clean it up a little bit?
Yeah. Uh, but the thing about this is when it's done, I mean, it's it. I never really thought about vinyl letters, but with vinyl, they could, they could cut every, every part of it out.
They can do one piece of it, a whole sheet?
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully, cause.
Cause that side of the park is huge and they do that in sections and it still looks pretty good.
And, and if you seal it, I mean, you know, they can, with vinyl, all you gotta do is protect it.
Yeah, and they got something now that, because past, we had to redo it all the time and now they got something that protects it and it lasts a long time now.
I remember back in, back in the day, I mean, this is a bunch of years ago, you could print vinyl as long as you wanted, but only three feet tall. You know, so that would be more than enough, probably. The biggest part of that would be the seal and the letters, so, you know. But either way, they'd, they'd be able to, they'd be able to work it even if they had to print it all in pieces.
So we don't want Kentucky on it anyway?
I thought about that too, I mean, you know, the, the way, the way I thought about it, if they don't know they're in Kentucky, they've been.
They ain't even know what Hartford is. There's a lot of people that live here that don't know they're in Kentucky.
And like I said, if I do the seal just like it is on, on that T-shirt it has, City Harbor, Kentucky, across top of it, so. There is that.
It might fit Phoenix.
Well, do you have a particular one that you wanna pursue or?
I like the bottom.
I don't too.
No, I can see it from here.
Okay.
No, I said I can see it.
I would not know one of these tonight.
Can't you see it?
I mean, if you want to, I, I can, I can just go ahead and kinda work up the seal.
I was gonna say, now that he's got that image in there, he can, he can put that all together and give you a final version.
Okay.
And I can email it back to Lisa and she can send it out to you all and you can, you know.
So why did you feel like the bottom was best, Dustin, I missed for that conversation?
I just said it's the most sensible, I mean.
Send him, get another picture.
Okay.
I was saying, it's the one that's just the most sensible, the, the others I, I create, well, besides, besides the, that one there, the, the second, the second one from the bottom, just because these were just.
Send her a picture of the sheet of the bottom of these, oh, okay.
Uh, the bottom two, like I said, are more sensible just because the, the top three were, you know, uh, sometimes whenever, whenever you're just like, hey, see what you can come up with, that's when you get the nuttiest.
Well, now, I like them all, really, I think the bottom two though are kinda similar, I mean, not super similar to what we're had, what we have now, but not too far off either. I mean, if we want something unique and different, uh, I like the things, but. So it would be this, you said Tara, that would be in that circle there?
Yeah. Yeah.
What you might do, you wanna tell him to go ahead and work on this bottom one?
That one?
Make a motion, we go with the bottom one. A second.
Okay. With, uh, the circle filled in and everything?
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You in favor of that?
Motion carried.
That's the first thing you've been in favor of, didn't you? Well, you know, that's a losing battle and I know how to pick battles.
All right, appreciate what you've done, they all look pretty good, so. Um, anybody have anything you wanna bring up?
We heard any more about that, uh, piece of equipment that couldn't get calibrated, measuring our sewer going out or anything like that?
Oh, the sewer.
Monitor thing?
Yeah, we're getting a report, um. I mean, they're getting one, I'm not su, I haven't talked to them about it, they've kinda put it on the back burner, um. They're getting a report and we're sending a report once a month down to regional wastewater of what we're measuring. But, um, what we're measuring is not that much different from what they're measuring, you know, because we're just putting a lot in, a lot into the sewer, through the sewer. It's just a matter of tightening up the system, you know, still trying to work on that end of it.
Well, the, the last time Josh was here, he said that, that Morris couldn't get it calibrated.
Well, he's, he's come in and worked on it some, I don't know if he's still got it right or not, you know, I haven't talked to him about it.
We paid, what, how much money for that, everything, fourteen thousand?
Oh, about forty, I think time we've got it in.
Forty, oh boy, did I underestimate that. And it still doesn't work? Yeah, but it, you know, and, well, never mind.
Uh, the electronic part of it, they were using the wrong units or something when it was initially set up, the way I understand it. But I'll talk to, I'll talk to the people tomorrow and see where we are on it. Or you can call them and talk to them.
It's your job.
Okay. Anything else anybody have? I entertain a motion that we, well, we can't, we're gonna go in closed session, aren't we?
Yeah, make a motion, we go in closed session.
Yeah.
Yeah. I second it.
Okay, all in favor? All right, motion carried.